Get her rolling here. I'd like to call today's Monday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Regular council meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, on this blustery Monday afternoon. A little bit better than it was yesterday or last night, but still a little chillier than we've been, so. Bundle up. Get right at it. And are there any added items? Yes, Mr. Mayor.
It's not an added item. I would just like to move the COVID update to presentations. That we have Director Powell with us, so he'll be able to be even attend to other duties.
Excellent. Not a problem at all. All right. Anything else? Seeing none, I'll move along. I've entertained a motion to adopt today's agenda as amended. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, worship. I move that we adopt the agenda as amended for December, Monday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. Perfect. Let's move right along to adoption of a previous minutes. We have three of them. May I have a motion for the first set? Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, worship. I moved that the minutes from the November twenty-third, twenty twenty regular council meeting be adopted as presented.
Excellent. Any errors, omissions, corrections? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. All right. May I have a motion for the next set? Counselor Blatts.
Thank you, worship. I moved that the minutes from the November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty special council meeting be adopted as presented.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions, comments, errors, omissions on this set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a votes. All in favor? And opposed? That motion is carried as well. And finally, our third set. Counselor Overwater.
Thank you, worship. I've moved that the minutes from the November thirtieth, twenty twenty special council meeting be adopted as presented.
Excellent. Comments, questions, errors, omissions. Counselor Thompson.
Just a quick note on page seventeen. I believe it should read A E M A, not A M A. In reference to the D Dem report. Also. On pages eighteen and nineteen, if I could just have my my last name amended to remove the P.
Okay. Any other errors, omissions?
No, sir.
All right. Seeing none, I will.
All right. Just clarity. Where are we amending the A what?
Page seventeen.
Yeah.
Yep.
Where? The Alberta Emergency Management Association, not A M A, if I'm correct?
That's correct.
B M A. Yep. So the first sentence after three A.
Yes.
A M A. It's the Alberta Motor Association.
Well, it could be the Alberta Medical Association, so.
Yeah.
But it is emergency, so.
Pretty sure.
It is.
Yeah. Good catch. Thank you. All right. Nothing further. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? And opposed? Motion is carried. All right. Let's move along to presentations and delegations. And we have item six A moved up to there. So C A O.
Thank you, worship. I would like to introduce Director Brian Powell to give an update in regards to COVID nineteen incident command post. As well as giving an update in regards to the town facilities. A lot has changed since the last time we met in the province introducing a a number of new restrictions that we have to follow as a town and as people. So with that, I'll ask Director Powell to give an update and Director Wagstaff and myself will give an update on our facilities. Well. Director Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Your worship, council members, gallery, thank you so much for the opportunity to have a to be brought up a little sooner in the council presentation. It's not that I don't really enjoy spending a lot of time with you folks. It's we have a lot on the plate here. So. Thanks again. I C A P update. You can see you've been provided with a quick, short and very abbreviated PowerPoint update. We try to get down to the point and try to minimize your reading as as little as possible, but essentially there's been obviously a lot going on behind the scenes just to try and maintain some communication continuity and understanding exactly what it is. We're facing maintaining some communication with the A E M A and the entire on emergency management organization without throughout the province and their vested partners such as the hospital, the college, et cetera, within our own community. And so that's where the I C P really shines and brings together those that group of individuals to bring quick up to up to date reports as to what's going on, what's in their camps, and then we can get some clear factual evidence as to what is happening in the moment so that we can adapt quickly if we need to. So the general I C P update do apologize because some of this stuff is is becoming stale already. You're aware of it. I'll take it from the initial the initial slides that we have in front of us. We set up our command post twenty-seven November and then worked forward from there. Initial town staff of twelve participants. It's morphed into something larger, but the majority of that is participants from outside agencies such as college, hospital, Mountain View seniors, et cetera, who stakeholders are in this public health part of me and stakeholders who are wanting to come to the table at least once as a larger group for a quick sit rep. Key reasons why we did enhance activate those were the reasons why we saw a sharp increase in in cases. Rather more so than the number of cases. The increase was what we the rate of increases of what we're we pay attention to as well. And those are essentially the key reasons, but essentially to get ourselves in the starting blocks, get the dust off from the from the spring and have roles and responsibilities ready. So if we're having to face any further requests or emergencies, we're able to handle them a little bit better. Moving on through operations, I will give this slide to Mr. Wagstaff to do a quick overview on a peace officers responsibility. I probably will jump in the front of that and deal with the fire. And just have that conversation about response protocols are still in place. Senior management staff has enacted that separation protocol like they did in the spring. Not unlike what the town staff is doing as well. We recommended that they stop their face to face and minimize their face to face as little as possible. Give them as a little bit like high value targets and we can't afford to replace them that quickly. So we want to put a lot of onus and and understanding on that higher level management group to be even further diligent in separating themselves from from each other. No public access to the fire hall and weekly training models have moved. And I understand there is a mandatory requirement to ensure the reliability and serviceability of the apparatus, so that we do have to put members at in there weekly, but they are separated down to smaller work groups and they'll stay that way for the for the not too distant future here. And again, paid on call members are following government Alberta protocols. The next slide, if I could hand that to Mr. Wagstaff on operations municipal enforcement.
You're on mute, Mr. Wagstaff.
Operationally wise, we have separated out the the peace officers to ensure that they're not having any unneeded face to face contact. We have put in place operational procedure with both Alberta Health Services and the local R C M P detachment in handling any COVID related complaints that do come through. They are vetted through Alberta Health Services and then will be maybe returned back to municipal enforcement or the local R C M P detachment to follow up on depending upon the circumstances of those complaints. They are reducing their contact with the protocol that they put in place with regards to traffic stops. And with any complaints that are coming through. It is an approach across the community that education and awareness is the first first step with any complaints, whether it's officer observed or whether it's an investigation they've been asked to follow through with Alberta Health Services. That is the update with municipal enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Wagstaff. The next slide is actually in operations as well as the Sportsplex and the Quark Center as well.
So the update on the facilities. I'll start with the emergency social services. The Great Neighbors Program is again coordinating the G N P check in and drive by celebrations. At this point in time, there has been assessed that there's no need at this point to assist with grocery delivery. That is being met by the grocery stores and their curbside and delivery services that they offer themselves. Community Services is also in its role of emergency social services, working with Mountain View seniors housing for any assistance that they may require at this point in time. COVID in COVID impacted facility closures. Of course, the Aquatic Center and Sportsplex are closed per provincial mandate. They're close to the public until any further notice. The Aquatic Center, the casual staff are not scheduled to work. Therefore, they're out of work. We have provided them information on federal government aid programs. They're also going to be provided information on Mountain View seniors housing temporary employment opportunities. So we will be passing that along. The full time staff are working within the facility or from home on a rotating schedule. There are still some items that need to be checked in on on the pool as well as some product painting projects that they'll be working on from now until Christmas break. And then they'll be taking their Christmas break extended with with leaves from January twenty-third to January, sorry, December twenty-third to January fourth. Sportsplex staff are scheduled until the Christmas break, focusing on completing some of the facility improvement projects that were remaining from the closure from the facilities shut down in the spring. They're working through until the Christmas break, taking an extended Christmas break with their leave until January fourth. We're looking at a third party operated facilities, Olds Municipal Library. They are physically closed to the public. They are still open for curbside and shipping. They are operating under their normally scheduled holiday hours. Mountain View Museum and Archives has closed early with the mandated closure of museums and those types of facilities. They typically take a break in January and they are maintaining that same break and anticipating opening back up in January twenty-sixth, which is usual to their winter break that they would have a closure. The Sunshine Bus is operating on its regular holiday hours. So it is open for operation as an essential service and a public service for those of aged fifty-five and over, anyone who with mobility issues as such, it is continued to be a required service for many of its many of its regulars. They are closed December twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth and January first per regular holiday scheduled hours. That is the update with our facilities.
And can I can I give a quick update to the Town Administration Office? We'll be open till December twenty-third and then on from December twenty-fourth through to January third, opening on the fourth, we'll be closed. With that, there will be a delay in getting the utility bills out in January by about four or five days. So they'll they'll be a it'd be a bit late for than usual. We will be on call for emergency responses or for any break. He just that happened with our infrastructure, so to speak, during that period of time. So we will have service available if necessary. Staff during this period of time will be taking a leave to basically take be able to take those days off during the closure of the office with the various protocols we have in place. I think it's important that we do close the office during this period of time and hopefully by the time the fourth comes, we'll see a bit of a difference. If not, we'll have to certainly make a few other adjustments. I think that's the update I wanted to provide in regards to the Town Hall, but I just wanted to make sure that every the public knew that we would be closing from the twenty-fourth through to the fourth. And the last thing I wouldn't mind is that we only have three agenda items for our policy and priorities meeting for January the fourth. I'm not seeing anything coming in the next week or so. So I was hoping I could get a motion of from council to basically cancel the January fourth Policy and Priorities Committee meeting. If something does emerge, if we would still have to have a special council meeting to deal with it anyway, because the policy and priorities is for information and not for decision making. So at the end of this presentation, if you would consider that, I would appreciate it. If not, that's fine, too. We'll be prepared to meet on the fourth.
Okay, thank you both. Just to conclude on the I C P update is, you know, we maintain that provide some guidance in all positions to just do some smart, logistically prudent, logically prudent objectives relative and time sensitive. Looking forward, we're working on a variety of other objectives just to strengthen our our fallback workforce in terms of assistance with the public. We've have had Saturday calls for assistance on looking for staffing. And we've endeavored to assist it on those types of aspects. Those are the pieces that we're looking at updating our our skill sets with our town employees as well as getting the proper people in the right positions in harmony with our business continuity plan. Those pieces always have to be updated and people come and go and we want to make sure that we're clear on that. We're also looking at our community as a whole and seeing where our strengths lie in terms of manpower and skill set. Should we need to fall back on any of those assistances as well? Just to be clear, we're well aware COVID is inside the wire. It's here. It's it's penetrated some of our vulnerable sectors. And the advice I give to the public is to be extra vigilant throughout this holiday season. It's very, very important to maintain your social distancing, to please wear your wear your masks and to please offer that respect to the community that we so much deserve. That's all I have. Is there any questions for emergency management?
Thank you, Director Powell, for your continued work and great update. So I will ask for a motion to begin with and then we can have some questions for any of this. Counselor Blatts.
Thank you, worship. The sun shining in my face here and I don't have a blind on the window. Pardon me. I still move that we accept the I C P report for information and I do have a question as well. Under the municipal enforcement portion of this, there's been several rumors going around town and and other various places. And one of them is that the people are being pulled over if there's multiple persons in their vehicle and being fined up to a thousand dollars per person. And I think we need some clarity on that. And the other thing too is will we will we be acting only based on complaints given to A H S? Or will they be physically driving around looking at homes where they suspect there's people more than one or two families getting together? I mean, people have an awful lot of questions in regards to this and we then those same people have been told that they will be fined ten thousand dollars per household if they break this A H S restriction. So I'd just like some clarity from that through you, your worship, to either Director Powell or someone who could possibly give me Director Wagstaff give me some kind of clarity on that.
Would be Director Wagstaff with that?
Yeah.
So I can't speak to what has gone on in other municipalities. I can't speak to what has gone on in our municipality. We have not issued any fines with regards to COVID related offenses. What has been clear from the province is the first initial step is an educational awareness piece to approach anyone or that's been reported to us on an education piece. The process, to be clear, is it is all all complaints are directed to the Alberta Health Services and then they disseminate that information out to the appropriate investigative source, whether that be their own Alberta Health Services peace officers, a local community peace officer with the municipality or the local R C M P detachment. And we have had two of those. We do have to report them back to the solicitor general whenever we investigate any COVID related A H S directive. Those are reported back to the solicitor general. And at this point in time, when you ask the question specifically about the fine amounts, the province has set those fines. They are a twelve hundred dollar fine. Whether that is to an individual or that is to a person, that's per offense per day. Where you would have heard something in reflection to the ten thousand dollar mark is municipalities under the M G A may fine up to ten thousand dollars at maximum. So I'm not sure where that's residing from, but that may be where that figure comes from. With regards to any traffic stops, that is not been in something as you described is not something that has occurred within our community.
Thank you for that. I I did wish to get that clarification because yet again, social media is our worst enemy in this.
And it's widespread because it can come from anywhere in the world, really. The last one that you had asked about how we do the enforcement, those come from Alberta Health Services. No peace officers are not driving around in residential areas looking for offenses in that way. They are investigating those that are being directed to them from Alberta Health Services. And anything that is blatant in front of them, they address on an awareness educational perspective.
Thank you for that. I I and again, like I said, social media has not been our friend in this and I just don't want to see our peace officers get a bad rap. You know, with people accusing them of this is the type of process they're going through and that they're driving around randomly checking houses and knocking on doors. Because I think that we need to be very clear in our communication going forward that this is the process. And again, encouraging people to follow the protocol and the restrictions, but I think we need to be very clear and direct in our communication so people understand what is happening and what the processes are. Thank you for this, Director Wagstaff, and and thank you, Director Powell, for your presentation.
And if if I can add, the Ministry of Justice and Solicitor General has put out that driving, you know, within a vehicle with multiple people from multiple households is not an offense. They're looking at the activities where people are heading to. They are highly recommending that there's still masks being worn within vehicles. If it is a work vehicle, it is mandated.
Right. Well, and it's common sense, too.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much, Director Wagstaff and Director or Counselor Blatts. We'll go to Counselor Overwater, then Harper.
Thank you, worship. Oh.
Sorry.
Great. Okay. Thank you, worship. Yeah, we don't want the peace officers standing at the the turkey aisle looking for twenty thirty pound turkeys and seeing how many people are coming to somebody's house. Anyways, my question is, what is our what is the north boundary of Mountain View County? And then I do have a second question or comment that you know, there's been a different talk of people, you know, going and making appointments for COVID tests. Being in the lineup, the lineup ends up being atrociously long. And so they end up not getting tested, going home and getting a phone call saying that they've been tested positive. So now I don't know how many times that happens. I firmly still believe that our numbers are skewed. I think a lot of times you know, the the a lot of the elderly deaths are solely blamed on COVID. And you know, with without saying that they have a lot of underlying problems that, you know, COVID probably certainly moved their their untimely death sooner than what was what was going to happen. But I still believe sometimes that our numbers are skewed by how it's reported from the doctors into whoever compiles all the numbers. So anyways, that's just a comment from me, but I would like to know what our north boundary is. So like when they say Olds and North Boundary of Mountain View County, I know I had this discussion with the mayor the other day, but I would just like to know exactly where that boundary is when they say that.
I could answer that. It's largely Township Road through three, four, zero, which is essentially six miles north of the town of Olds. There are some staggering boundaries where it'll extend up into Township thirty-two, thirty-four, two. So if we look at our, I guess, our county electoral area, I believe we have a rural from a fire protection, we have a rural population in our region of Olds. I believe it's just over two thousand. I again, I be it's been a while since I've seen that statistic. So I suspect you're trying to capture what that population is. Is that what you're looking at?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, I know, like I said, I had this conversation with the mayor and, you know, I wanted to know exactly what the numbers are and it seems like I always seem to get the the Mountain View County North and Olds. So I just wanted to know what actually is the town of Olds and what is the Mountain View County numbers. So but yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, but just go back to to Mr. Powell. Have you heard of other incidences where, you know, people have, you know, really not, you know, they've signed up to get tested, but they didn't get tested and have been called to say that they were positive. I mean, has there been other issues of that? Or do you think this is a one off or what?
That piece is, and it's an interesting question you have there. Our local level at emergency management, it's unlikely that we would have that direct statistic.
No.
Given to us. However, from a public health perspective, who do comment to us regularly, they've provided with us no indication of a similar discussion of your mentioning here. So if I find unusual that this is the first, we're hearing some of this here, but we could certainly look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harper.
Thank you. Just would like to know how often you guys have been meeting as the incident command post? Is it still weekly? And how many participants are within that I C P?
We are meeting weekly with the sit rep. We have an objectives meeting as well weekly, which precedes that. And then the senior management group is is working daily with communications coordination with all the other vested individuals in the in the community. The the town staff on that today, I believe, is just under eighteen, I think. I apologize for the exact number. And then we have outside agencies which extend our mail out to somewhere in the vicinity of about thirty-two.
So just a follow up question. Has any other community put together an incident command post or reenacted their E O C?
Yeah, right now in the province, I think I read this morning, there's sixty-seven in the province that have municipal I C P E O Cs or equivalents.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ryan.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, worship. I just want to expand on what Director Wagstaff mentioned with regards to the library. Just to give you a little bit more direct information, regular libraries are ours, you said he'd mentioned, but I I'll give you the actual hours. It's Monday to Friday now. Nine to five. We actually closed on December thirteenth as mandated by the province. We had a board meeting last week to discuss what we were going to do. We will be doing our curbside pickup once again. And we will also have be able to give out and we started which we started today, holidays around the world, craft boxes. And so those are available as well. We will be doing some online programming on Facebook. So there is at least we have some opportunity to utilize the the library while we are closed.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Any other questions for any of the speakers in this update? All right, we have a motion on the table to accept for information. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? Not motion is carried. Administration has asked us to have a motion to cancel the January 4th, 2021 P and P meeting. May I have that motion, Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. Yes, I move to cancel January 4th, 2021 P and P meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody with questions or concerns regarding this?
Michael, sorry, your worship. Will we be having an update as we did before with yourself updating council from the CAO during our, during this shutdown of COVID?
Yep, we can certainly do those. Once a week, maybe?
Yeah, we can talk about it, but I just thought, you know, maybe we should, so that we're up to date when people ask us.
Yeah, absolutely. CAO and then Counselor Blatt.
Yes, thanks. I'm glad you asked that question. We will basically continue to provide updates in regards to our reporting from the ICP as well as we are, if there's anything happening, I will give an update directly to council to inform them what's going on internally to the operations or that will be communicated likely in the very near future to the general public. So I'll keep council up to date and it'd be great if it could flow through to the mayor, to all of council. We will be meeting tentatively on the 30th as a executive team and emergency management team. If necessary, if things are changing, we basically have tentatively booked the 30th for a potential meeting and just to be there. If things are happening sooner than that, we'll obviously have to get together at that point in time as well. So we'll be monitoring the situation from both parties, the emergency management team and the executive team to make sure that the town is basically getting the latest communication. No matter what the circumstances in regards to closures of the offices.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, CAO. Counselor Blatt.
Thank you, worship. Actually, Mr. Merrick has actually answered my question. My only concern with not having a P and P meeting would be just the ICP update, but if we're going to get regular updates from them anyway, then I, I think that that's fine. I support canceling.
And the December, the January 11th council meeting will have an update from Director Powell as well.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? Motion is carried. All right. Thank you very much, Director Powell. We'll let you, release you to go to your other business and thank you very much for the update.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, Brian.
Stay safe.
Yeah.
You too.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, let's move along to a business arising out of the minutes or any unfinished business. Seeing no hands, we'll move along to bylaws, bylaw five, or item 5A, bylaw 2020 dash 17.
Thank you, worship. We've had a number of discussions on this and the administration was asked to bring back one change to the rates by law. And I'll ask Director Linderman to speak to that change. Director Linderman.
Thank you. So the bylaw being presented today, there has been amendment made to Schedule A, which and to the rate for the second black bin going from 1930 a month down to $10 a month. And that is the only change since first reading.
Guess I didn't need to mute my thing because the presentation was so very succinct. Thank you. May I start with motion for second reading, please? Counselor Thompson.
Yes, your worship. I would move that second reading be given to bylaw 2020 dash 17, rates by law as amended.
Excellent. And questions, comments, concerns? Yes, Counselor Ryan.
Uh, no question, just a comment that I'm, I'm really glad that we've decreased this. It does speak to what information we received from residents during our, our budget survey and I, I'm really happy that it's been included in, in the, in the rates by law for this just decrease to a, to a, a level that is more conducive to people who, who really need these, these additional boxes. So thank you.
Excellent. Counselor Harper.
Thank you very much, your worship. And actually, I was going to speak actually to the second black bin rate. I know that some of the counselors are very pleased that it's very reasonable, but unfortunately, I, I would suggest that it's too reasonable and doesn't encourage people to do their recycling and that. And the $10 a month is far too cheap. And I think you're going to see a tremendous amount of our citizens ordering black bins just because they don't want to recycle and compost. So that's just my opinion on that. And I think we worked really hard to try to get people to recycle in that. There was opportunities for people to have additional bins, but yes, you're right, it was fairly high. And, but that was for a reason. Anyways, that's my opinion.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Harper. And Counselor Overwater, then Blatt.
Thank you, worship. Then does Counselor Harper have a different amount in mind that she thinks? Or you feel that it should just stay at the 1930?
If you want to answer, yeah.
I would suggest more reasonable amount would be, say, 50% of what, what the solid waste fee is. And for example, the solid waste fee for 2021 is $24.30. $12.15 would be more reasonable. So we could continue on going 50% of that rate.
I could live with that.
Thank you. Counselor Blatt.
I actually like the $10 rate and I guess maybe perhaps what we need to do as we are going to review this on an annual basis, correct, Director Linderman? That if we do see a greater influx of people requesting the second black bin, then we review it at that time, perhaps. But I think $10 is more than reasonable and I'm very happy with the rate personally. And, and as I recognized it and should have probably mentioned it a few years ago, I, I, I believe that this is a much better and more reasonable rate myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else before I circle back to Counselor Ryan? Counselor Bennett.
I too agree with Counselor Harper. I'm not in favor of the $10 and we'll see what happens. Everything's up for review.
Absolutely. Counselor Thompson, then Ryan.
Your worship, I, I like the, the new number as it is. It actually reflects our costs more closely. And it's, it's a fair service for our residents.
Excellent. Back to Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, your worship. I, I, I do think that it's a, it's a better pricing. It's more fair. And you know, the people who are recycling, it's not going to stop me from, from not reci, from recycling or during the composting that I've always done. I, I think at the time, council made a good decision to have a higher rate to, to encourage people to recycle into compost, but I think people are doing that now. And I don't think we, we need to, this is almost like penalizing them for, for needing an additional black bin. And I, and I think it's, it's, it's time we make the change and I think the $10 is fair. I would like to make sure that our administration continues to monitor that price. And as, as Counselor Blatt said, if that price doesn't seem to be covering our costs, then we should make sure that it does. And bring this back even if we need to in six months, but I, I do agree that the $10 is a more fair charge. Thank you.
Counselor Overwater, one quick comment?
Sure. Thank you, worship. Right now we have 100 second black bins. So with this quite a huge reduction, you know, we may find ourselves with quite a few more bins. And which would, I would think would increase our costs. You know, I mean, we could go from 100 to 500 bins. So I would really make sure that administration is monitoring how many people are coming in and wanting a second black bin because, you know, the, the cost of 100 bins is going to be substantially less than the, the cost of having 500 or even 1,000 black bins. So, you know, I think we really need to monitor this. My opinion.
Certainly will. Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, worship. I too would like to mention that not a lot of land is being given out for landfills any longer. So there is a shelf life for how landfills are able to hold trash. And I would also want people to know and respect that, that we just don't have another one around the line.
Alrighty, we have a motion on the table. Any, yes, CAO.
I wasn't sure if we had an alternate motion from Counselor Harper, but I did want to speak about the monitoring of the bins. Administration monitors most all these aspects, whether it's bins or other things. It's part of our service level to ensure that we have it. It's also part of our budgetary process and obviously if we get more or less of something, it's going to impact our budget and we would often have to make, not too often, but the budgetary adjustments accordingly if things do change dramatically one way or the other. So they, they are being monitored on a constant basis.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Harper.
I'm not prepared to make an amending motion now, but I just wanted to provide caution to my fellow counselors. And the other part that I'd like to bring attention to, I'm not sure how many additional bins our town does have on hand. But there might be a greater demand for them with this price reduction. And it might be harder to get right now.
Good point on that. And we can maybe have a look at that stock level and, and see if it's adequate. All right, we do have a motion on the table. We'll call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. All right. Let us move along to item 5B, bylaw 2020 dash 18, CAO.
Oh, no. We did third reading.
Oh, my goodness. Yes, we do. May I have a motion for third reading? Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, your worship. I view the third reading be given to bylaw 2020 dash 17 rates by law as amended.
Excellent. Any questions, comments, concerns? Last chance for this one. Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion carries. All right. Thank you so much for pointing out the third reading there. Now we get to move along to item 5B, CAO.
Yes, and this is the election by law 2020 dash 18. This was presented last November 23rd, 2022 council. Since then, we have had received a legal opinion. Basically, not much has changed with the legal opinion. Most of the adjustments have been due to redundancies with the Local Authorities' Election Act. And obviously, to be in sync, the Local Authorities' Election Act takes precedence over the bylaw. So those are basically some of the adjustments that were made to this by law. So we are seeking second and third reading of this by law today. But before moving on, I'll ask the Legislative Clerk, Marcy McKinnon, to if she has anything she'd like to add to this.
Legislative clerk.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, wonderful. If I could just draw your attention to page 67 of the agenda or page two of the bylaw. One of the amendments that should have saved that, but did not properly was incapacitated elector needs to be changed to persons with disabilities. So that happens in the third and, sorry, fourth and fifth kind of definitions on page 67. And then if you go over to page fa, 70 or page five of the bylaw, the title incapacitated elector will be amended as well in paragraph 23, incapacity will be changed to disability. And those would be deferred or amendments that we would add to your, as amended motion if it's put on the floor for consideration. And as CAO Merritt said, most of these are being suggested edit to be taken out due to redundancy. And I think that will be Counselor Harper. She had asked if we were put in a motion for, or sorry, not a motion, put in a definition for campaign materials. And if you turn to page sorry, just going here again, page nine of the bylaw, and so that would be page like Sean. Right there. Thank you. Yeah, page, point number fifth, point number 57. Campaign material in any form. So for me to write a definition of campaign material, I'd have to list everything we think is campaign material. And nowadays it can be anything. So in any form, according to Brownlee, we feel covers us off right there and we trust that that would be acceptable for Counselor Harper and the rest of council. And I think if there, that's really it for highlights from, from us.
Excellent. Thank you. May I have a motion for second reading, please? Counselor Harper, because I can only see Counselor Ryan and Counselor Harper at this moment.
Thank you very much, your worship. I'm just going back to what our legislative clerk said. So that we would be making a motion for second reading of the election by law 2020 dash 18 as amended. So we would be ensuring that the words incapacitated elector be replaced with persons with disabilities. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Excellent. All right. Can we, Sean, zoom back out or close the share? So that I can see everybody. There we are. All right. Questions, comments, concerns? Counselor Overwater.
Thank you, worship. On page 65, it's totally taken out the transparency of candidate paperwork. Have I missed that somewhere? Like, is it? Why is that taken out? Isn't, isn't that something that should be in here? Or is that just in the elections act?
I can see to this if you'll let. Sure. It's in the app.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that being in our bylaw?
No, we, we had asked that we put it on the website and we have the ability to disclose it accordingly as we can find, or sorry, that we deem appropriate with the restrictions that were given with COVID as well as how many requests we get in for said information.
So just a question back again. So to Marcy, then when we put that information on the website, will we only be putting our bylaw? We're not mandated to put the whole election candidate file paperwork on there, are we?
So we go above and beyond and we will update our election page, hopefully by the end of this week. And it will have a bunch of links to all of the acts that govern how the elections are run. As well as we will have the pre-filled in forms for people to start, I guess, using or referencing if they choose to go on to Alberta Municipal Affairs themselves and get it directly from there, or we're making it, trying to make it easier for them. But again, we go back to, to always look at the, the act on the sites that they come from, as they may be updated compared to our information. I think I answered your question.
Yeah, you did. I, I just want to make sure that we're not liable anywhere that with regards to, if I go on there and say, well, that's what I read on there and it's not updated. Am I? I, I don't want the town to be having a conflict with that. That's what I'm.
Thank you. Great point. But we provide this information as information only. It is not intended to replace anything and it is absolutely the candidate's responsibility to know their acts and reply, or sorry, that. To comply with any statutes or regulations.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Marcy. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Harper.
Thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you very much, your worship. Under, on page sixty-eight of our agenda, nomination hours. Um, how will we intend handling this? If our town office remains closed? Because it indicates that we'll, that the returning offers officer, which in this case is our legislative clerk, would receive nominations starting, um, January fourth and during regular business hours. And I think that needs to be changed too unless we're going back to eight-thirty in the morning.
It will be. It's mercy here and we, the candidates will only be able to come in by appointment and that will be spread all over the website when we put it on there. Um, it's already, I've got it already, the blurb in my draft for the website that it is by appointment only. And the, um, we'll have a cell phone for the, for myself as returning officer to take those appointments.
Okay, thank you. As long as everybody's aware of that.
You bet.
Right. Thank you, Counselor Harper. Um, any other questions, comments, concerns? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion on the table. I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. All right, let's move along to the third reading. Counselor Blatts?
Thank you, worship. I move that third reading be given to the Town of Old, uh, Town of Old's twenty-twenty-one bylaw, election bylaw twenty twenty dash eighteen as amended.
Excellent. Any further comments, questions concerning?
I, I just want to thank Marcy for all her work on this.
Yeah.
I think she's done a tremendous job and for bringing it back and bringing the updated information. I appreciate this.
Absolutely. All right. Seeing no, I will call for the vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. Alrighty. Ends the bylaw section of our agenda today, and we will move into new business. We've taken care of item six A already. Uh, let's go to six B. C A O?
Thank you, worship. And I'll ask Director Scott Chant to speak to the appointment of Development Officer. Director Chant?
Uh, thank you through the chair. So this here, um, is the appointment of a new development officer for the Town of Olds. Kyle Sloan joined us here just over two weeks ago and, uh, welcome him aboard, and this would give him also signing authority as well as myself as the development officer for the Town of Olds.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Uh, may I have a motion? Counselor Harper?
Thank you very much, your worship. I so move that Mr. Kyle Sloan be appointed as Development Officer for the Town of Olds with authority to sign development and building permit applications.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Harper. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, uh, before we call for the vote, I'd like to welcome officially, uh, Mr. S- Mr. Sloan. I know I've seen him around the office. He looks like he's diligently working all the time. And I'm sure he's got his feet under him after the two weeks. Uh, won't mind jumping in and signing a whole bunch of pieces of papers. Thank you, Mr. Sloan, for joining the team and welcome. And, uh, with that said, I will call for the vote. All in favor? That motion carries. All right. Well, let's continue on. Item six C. C A O?
Uh, thank you, worship. And we're asking council to basically approve the two F C S S grants. And I'll ask Director Wegstaff to speak to these two items. Director Wegstaff?
So as it says in the R F D, we do have some funds available in the budget with regards to F C S S funding. Because some of the programming that had been allocated in the spring did not come through, uh, with regards to COVID. So, uh, we did do a reach out and two of our groups that are quite active within the F C S S and that we're familiar with, uh, with the town that we work closely with, the Boys and Girls Club and the Youth Empowerment and Support Program. Uh, they do have projects that are still ongoing and would look to, uh, you know, deal with some of the expanded pressures that they've had with regards to COVID impact. So the Boys and Girls Club is providing programming for children from, uh, from birthday eighteen years of age. Uh, they're working on building self-esteem, confidence and competence, uh, empowering youth to develop life and leadership skills to contribute to back to their community. These funds that they've requested for eight thousand dollars are to, uh, continue to, uh, supply for the program supplies of, of their events. They were, the Boys and Girls Club, one of the, uh, first groups within the community that was authorized to reopen and begin providing services back in the spring with the closure. They reopened early, uh, and, and began to give supports for, for before and after school care. Uh, and that did require them with some additional costs with regards to how they were operating, how they were dividing up their groups. Uh, and the fact that they couldn't be sharing a lot of the items, they had to, uh, you know, add some expense that way. So that's what this request is for through the F C S S, uh, with the Boys and Girls Club. The S program, um, uh, to reduce stigma and mental health illness and promote positive mental health. They work with programs that foster social and emotional development, both in, uh, children and younger youth and provide them with, provide those, uh, youth with the tools they need to be resilient, independent and competent members of society. So that is a preventative program. Again, uh, they face some of the similar sorts of pressures. A lot of their supplies that they had for program supplies, uh, in the ways that they have traditionally interacted with, with the youth. They had to shift and, and separate out a lot of their supplies as well as purchase some additional ones. So both of these funding, uh, requests have come with regards to supplies in support of the programs that they offer under F C S S.
Well, thank you very much, Director Wegstaff. Both of these programs are incredibly vital to our community. They, uh, both these organizations offer such, um, uh, wonderful, uh, programming for our youth. And, um, I think it's, uh, probably connected to our, our crime rate. Because, uh, like I said, these, uh, programs keep our, our youth very busy with positive activities. Um, thank you for bringing this forward. So I would like, uh, to entertain a motion. Counselor Blatts?
Thank you, worship. I move that council approves the S A S grants as follows. The Boys and Girls Club for eight thousand, the S program for five thousand, in total of thirteen thousand dollars.
Excellent. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor? And opposed? Motion is carried. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Let's move along to item six D. C A O?
Uh, thank you, worship. Uh, six D is in regards to the potential waiver of the two thousand twenty-one, uh, residential business license renewal fee. As, um, this is the time of year that we basically look at the renewal fees that are coming in for our business license. We are still, as you know, with the update that, uh, Director Powell gave in regards to COVID, we're still in the midst of the COVID, uh, situation here and our businesses continue to, uh, look for assistance and any, uh, where we can possibly provide it. So, uh, Director Linderman has come up with a proposal to basically waive the two thousand twenty-one resident business license renewal fee for two thousand and twenty-one, but I'll ask, uh, Director Linderman if she has anything else to add.
Director Linderman?
Thank you. Um, so as Mr. Merritt said, uh, we would like to, um, have this as a small gesture of support to our local businesses. Uh, a proposal to waive the resident business license renewal fees for twenty twenty-one. The intent is that this would apply to existing businesses within the Town of Olds. There are currently five hundred and sixty-nine businesses that this would impact for a total cost of seventy-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. This is a cost that would be eligible under the most funding that we received from the provincial government.
Excellent. All right. May I start with a motion, Counselor Overwater, and then a question?
Yeah. Thank you, worship. Yes, I move the Town Olds waive twenty twenty-one resident business license renewal fees. Um, I'm just wondering why we would not be doing that for, um, the, uh, non-residential, uh, businesses as well? Why would we just, um, do the residential?
Director Linderman?
So my thought behind, um, only doing residential is because it would impact, um, I guess, just local business. It's totally up to council if you want to waive the entire all-business license fees for twenty twenty-one. Definitely, um, can be done. It, but this is just a starting point for conversation.
Um, just for clarity, and you can maybe, uh, let us know, Director Linderman. This encompasses businesses with bricks and mortar in the Town of Olds as well. Um, we've only left notes. No?
No, it's just home businesses only.
Just home businesses?
It's every business, every business.
Yes. If, if the business is, is either bricks and mortar in the town or a home-based business?
Yeah, every business.
That's what's encompassed here. It's the business licenses that are, uh, purchased by non-residents of Olds. So any businesses that have headquarters out in the county or, uh, we have, you know, Didsbury, Bowden, uh, Sundry, uh, businesses that have business licenses in Olds because they conduct a number of business, uh, activities. And so, uh, I believe that's the way it's, um, this is set up. Director Linderman?
Yes, so this includes, um, only businesses that are within the Town of Olds limits. It is both storefront businesses, home ox, um, but does not include those people that come in from out of town to do business in town.
Excellent. All right, um, C A O?
Reinforce that comment. I just want to say, I know, is that our reopening program for P P E? And, um, earlier this year was for local businesses as well. So just to be consistent in how we approached it, that was one of the things. But as Director Linderman said, the information is there in regards to if it's extended to non-res- uh, residential businesses.
Excellent. Uh, I believe Counselor Harper was first, then Blatts, then Thompson.
Thank you very much, your worship. I think the terminology is thrown off a couple of the counselors. And I think you've explained it very well. So it's for local businesses only within our town limits. Um, just a question. I just want to make sure that, that, um, businesses will still have to fill in the form so that we can continue to have a business directory updated going into twenty twenty-one and, and, uh, and onwards because we don't want to lose that data. So we need to make sure that we encourage the businesses to actually do the application. Just that right now, there won't be a fee if we pass this motion.
Yeah, I believe they still have to qualify for the business license. They just don't have a fee.
Yeah.
Director Linderman?
So my thought was when, we would normally do the renewals in January and send out an invoice at that time with the application form for any updates. And it's only if you have updates that you're required to send that back in. Um, with this, we would send the business licenses out with that application form and they can send in updates at that time.
Excellent. Uh, Counselor Blatts, did you have your hand up? You had?
I did quite a while ago. Thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to say that, well, that was going to be my point. I wanted to ensure that our businesses were still going to be required to fill out some type of paperwork so that we could in fact have updated information on business, our business directory. So.
Businesses have to qualify for a business.
Yes, and I want to make sure that we'll still follow that process by all means. Thank you.
Counselor Thompson, then Counselor Bennett?
Yes, your worship. I'd just like to say that I support the, uh, the notion of this, of what's being brought forward. I think it's a great use of the proceeds that the province has made available to us.
Excellent. Counselor Bennett, then Ryan?
Yes, I too want to thank Director Linderman for, um, being innovative and coming up with this because it's a wonderful idea and I'm fully on board.
Excellent. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, worship. That was also going to be my comment. I, I love this idea. And thank you, Director Linderman, for coming up with it because it's, it's even better than, uh, looking at a tax reduction or rebate because this is going to have direct benefit to our, to our local businesses, uh, especially in this very trying time that we all are living in. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for all your comments. Uh, any last comments, questions or concerns before we move along and call for the vote? Seeing none, I will do just that. Call for the vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much, everybody. All right, moving right along. We have, uh, item six E. C A O?
I thank you, worship. And last week at our Policy and Priorities meeting, we had a very fulsome discussion in regards to our various budgets. We were here for quite a while, uh, going back and forth in regards to how we could get the best budget and the, uh, situation that we're currently in with COVID and with, uh, reduced revenues coming into our town. With that, uh, we got a lot of direction from council, which I think has been incorporated into the latest documents. And I'll ask the Director Linderman to basically present, uh, the various items that are in front of you in regards to the operating capital budgets as well as our multi-year plan. So with that, uh, Director Linderman?
Thank you. As C A O Merritt, uh, said, we presented the twenty twenty-one operating and the twenty twenty-one and twenty-two capital budgets at last Monday's Policy and Procedures Meeting. So I'll start, um, today with the operating budget. The twenty twenty-one operating budget that was presented at that meeting had a deficit of nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. The budget being presented today is a balanced budget. All of the changes that have been made to the originally presented budget were listed in the R F D. So I'm not going to run through all of those. A few of the highlights from the twenty twenty-one operating budget include a zero percent tax rate increase, a wage freeze for all staff and council, an additional, uh, R C M P officer, the addition of an economic development coordinator, and a newly created protective services area. Also a reduction in summer staff from seventeen down to fifteen. Included in this budget is a transfer from the Tax Stabilization Reserve of just over fifty-two thousand dollars. This will leave this reserve with a balance of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. Should council want to explore more tax rate incentives next April, when the tax rate bylaw is presented. Another highlight, um, that's worth mentioning today is that today's budget at thirty million, four hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and one dollars is four hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars less than twenty twenty's budget. And with that, I will open it up to any questions or comments.
Excellent. Thank you, Director Linderman. Um, may I start with a motion, please? Counselor Blatts?
Thank you, worship. I move that the twenty twenty-one operating budget in the amount of thirty million, four hundred and eleven, seven hundred and one dollars be approved as presented. And I want to commend Director Linderman and our senior administrative staff and the staff that have worked very hard and diligently to present this to us to have bring us a balanced budget with a zero percent, zero tax increase.
Excellent. Thank you. And, uh, I'll echo that. And after a seven and a half hour marathon last Monday, um, I think everybody needs to pat it on the back because that was, uh, uh, very, very well done. And, um, kudos to everybody who worked so hard on this. Uh, any other questions, comments, concerns? Uh, Counselor Ryan?
Uh, thank you, uh, your worship. I, um, you know, we did, we did have a big discussion last, last week. Seven and a half hours was a long time for, for, uh, a meeting. And we did cut down quite a lot of things. Um, two items that I do want to continue to point out that, uh, that I still think that we can, can adjust, and that would be the, uh, uh, split of the second year market adjustment over the two years. I do think that the market has changed dramatically from last year when we got our initial report to now. I think it'll change again in twenty twenty-two. And I think that this is something that, uh, we should be actually considering. And the other thing is, is the, is the same thing that I mentioned last, last week, uh, at P and P with regards to the amount of money that we are putting aside for our economic development, uh, person that we're going to hire. I still believe that we can hire somebody, um, at a reduced price that we've, we've budgeted for. So, um, while we continue to put that, keep that higher price in the budget, I think we should, uh, keep that in mind when we go to hire that. I think we should keep that in mind when we go to hire, that I would like to really see somebody who would be a great person to be on Larry's Mr. Wright's cocktails and be a sponge for him. So those are two items. I do want to say that I'm extremely pleased with how this came out and that we're going to have a 0% increase this year for the second year in a row. That's a tremendous amount of work by our staff and also by this council. So thank you, everybody.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Anybody else with a comment, question, concern? Counselor Thompson?
Your Worship, I appreciate what Counselor Ryan has suggested. I have, I have one for and one against, I guess, still in mind. I, I understand that we were only funding for one officer for part of the year, and we're several officers behind. And I would have liked to seen that, that number increased a little bit. I think the other, the other portion where we as counselors need to be very mindful is in our own budget. Council's budget has increased significantly over this term, and that, and those honorariums and fees are something we need to be more mindful of.
Thank you for your comments. Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, Worship. I like the way the budget is right now, and I would just like to say that, you know, there was a few little inconsistencies that happened with our budget as to why, you know, there's a different amount in there this year, and I think council is very well aware of being prudent in our budget. I think we did a very good job of going through them a few times. And, you know, I think everybody has to realize that an uneducated council is not going to progress your community anywhere. And if you go to any conferences or anything like that, they will tell you that, just so that if you're uneducated, your community is not going to be progressive. So I think our council has done a very good job on the whole budget, and I think we did a good job on our own budget as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Overwater. Anybody else before I call the vote? All right, seeing none, I will do just that. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. All righty, thank you. Let's move along to the 2022, 2022, 2024 financial plan. We'll go direct to Director Linderman. That's all right, Mr. Merritt?
All right, thank you.
Middleman.
M G A regulations implemented for the 2020 financial year require municipalities to annually adopt a three-year financial plan. So in accordance with this regulation, the 2022 to 2024 financial plan is being presented today. This financial plan was created using 2021 budget numbers with the following assumptions. An inflationary factor of 2% on all goods and materials, contracted services, and utilities. COVID restrictions will be lifted in 2022. Aquatic Center and Sportsplex will return to pre-COVID numbers. Assessment will remain stagnant for 2022 and begin to increase again in 2023. Water and wastewater consumption rates increase by five cents per cubic meter annually. No new employees are hired, insurance increases of 10% annually, and all service levels remain status quo. And I will open it up to any questions now.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Director. May I have a motion to begin with? Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Worship. I move that the 2022-2024 financial plan be approved as information. And I really like how it's presented to us. So thank you very much, Director Linderman. I don't have any questions.
Excellent. Anybody else with questions, comments? Concerns? Seeing a lot of nodding heads, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, let's move along to the 2021 capital budget. Director Linderman?
The 2021 capital budget being presented today is $8,476,600. Items that have been removed since it was presented in detail at P and P last Monday are the M E in-car radio, M E patrol vehicle, a half-ton replacement, visitor information center, the electronic information screen at the Sportsplex, the meeting space at the Sportsplex, and the gator. The fire training facility upgrades were reduced to $15,000, and the Toboggan Hill has been moved from the 2022 capital budget to the 2021 capital budget with funding coming from M S I.
Excellent. On a day like today, we could certainly use a nice Toboggan Hill. So, thank you. May I have a motion? I believe Counselor Bennett had her hand up so very close last time, so I will ask her to move this one.
I move that the 2021 capital budget in the amount of $8,476,000 be approved as presented.
And 600.
And 600.
Oh, sorry, 600. Pardon me.
Plus 600. There we go. All right, comments, questions, concerns? Counselor Harper?
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Just for the public's information and our own, the 2022 capital budget does not call for any debentures at all for 2021.
2021, yeah, excellent. Very good point. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none? Counselor Ryan, you shifted like you were going to have your hand up, or is that the vote?
Well, I was thinking of making a comment, so sometimes speaking, I will. I, I would like, I like the fact that we've moved the Toboggan Hill up and perhaps Director Wagstaff to speak to that idea, or Director Champ that council has in mind, because I think the public would be interested in hearing a little bit more information. If this is not the appropriate time, then perhaps at some point, we, we put together a news release to, to put on our whole idea for over at the Rotary Park.
I think that's probably a more prudent, and we'll probably hit more people with that. And so I'll ask Director Champ and Wagstaff to work together on a, on a news release. Excellent.
That would be great.
All righty, any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried as well. All right, let's move along to the 2022 capital budget. Director Linderman?
The 2022 capital budget being presented today is $3,675,400. The only change being made is the Toboggan Hill moving to 2021.
Excellent. May I have a motion? Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, Worship. Yes, I move that the 2022 capital budget in the amount of $3,675,400 be approved as presented.
Excellent. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion carries. All right. Moving right along to the 2022 to 2031 Multi-Year Capital Plan. Director Linderman?
Thank you. So the 2022 to 2031 Long-Term Capital Plan being presented today is a total of $44,039,000. This 10-year plan gets modified and updated annually and forms the basis of the upcoming year's capital plan. I'm not going to go through each item in detail, but a few of the more significant items that council should be aware of are the South Reservoir relining in 2024, the planned fire truck purchases in both 2027 and 2029, and the North Reservoir replacement in 2029. If we look at the bottom of the plan on page 143 of your agenda, we see the total spending and funding sources by year. As you can see, spending is fairly consistent across the years with the exception of 2029. Moving down a bit further, we see the M S I is in a deficit position. When we get to these years, decisions would have to be made to defer projects or fund in a different manner. The M S I dollar value allotted to each year is the estimated allocation that the provincial government has provided for us at this time. But as we know, it is still an estimate, and a lot of uncertainty remains around M S I funding into the future. The red area mid-page represents our long-term debt. In my presentation last Monday, there was a slide on debt projections. Mentioned in there was an increase in debt for years 2024 and 2029. At this time, we're only anticipating these two instances where debt may be needed. Just as a note, our current debt limit, as per our 2019 financial statements, And our debt servicing limit is $6,105,889. If we move down to our reserves, we will continue to put a portion of amortization into reserves annually through our operating budget. As you can see from the totals at the end of 10 years, we will have increased our reserves by $800,000.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Director Linderman. May I start with a motion, please? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, Your Worship. I would move that the 2022 to 2031 Multi-Year Capital Plan be approved for, be approved for information.
Excellent. All right, questions, comments, concerns regarding the long-term capital plan? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion carries. All right. Wow, that was a culmination of a very, very good budget season. Starting back, I believe we did service level back in March, and it's absolutely wonderful to have this done out of the way before Christmas, and now we all can all enjoy turkey with our immediate families only. All right, let's, yes, Mr. C A O, Mr. Merritt?
I just would like to thank Director Linderman and the executive team. We put a lot of effort not only into this budget, but basically monitoring the situation and making corrections through the year because of COVID. And I think that allowed us to be in a good situation to deliver a zero increase in regards to tax rates for this upcoming year. So I want to thank council for their support and their hard work to get us to this. We've had networking sessions to inform, but also the seven and a half hours of good discussion to get us to where we were today, and thank you. Wow.
Absolutely. I, I don't think I'll get too much pushback on the fact that this was probably one of the most challenging years we've ever had. And trying to come up with a budget for next year was equally as challenging, and all of our staff stepped up to the plate, and thank you so much. All righty, let's move along to item 7A, Reports from Council Boards and Committees. Typically, we do this item at the end of the month, but as we do not have, this is our last council meeting of the year. We'll do this item here today. So Counselor Overwater?
Motion first?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move that the reports from council authorities, boards, committees, and commissions ending December 14, 2020 be received for information.
Excellent.
And, yes, I attended a few special council meetings, one with the joint with the County Mountain View to complete the I D P. I completed the, the Elected Officials Education Program, Council's Role in Service Delivery, so that was completed. Attended virtually the Seawha AGM, and proud to say Mr. Larry Wright is back on the board there. He does a fantastic job. Also, attended the Cape Board Meeting, introduced our business representative, James Carpenter, and with his bio and his video, the people on the Central Alberta Economic Partnership Board were very impressed with his credentials and are looking forward to working with him on that board. And he will also be on the Logistics and Transportation Committee and also the Alternate for Access Prosperity. So that's very good for us. And I'm sure he'll do a fantastic job. I had a meeting with Mr. Wright and Mr. Carpenter. And we just had a general discussion regarding Cape and the Town of Olds, our strategic process coming throughout the next few years. Mr. Carpenter is appointed for three years on that board. Also, attended virtually, the Town of Innisville had a their economic development presentation for their community. They had hired Doug Griffiths and Jennifer Thompson, who works with him, and it was, it was very good. It was interesting because I know you guys always, you know, I always talk about the lights. You know, like, let's have lights in our community. It makes it welcoming, and, and people feel just warm and friendly when they're around all those lights. And that was one of their suggestions for downtown Innisville, because they do have some beautiful trees that they can wrap the lights. So Mr. Champ can look at, look at that somewhere along the line, because I keep talking about them. And then I also did a tour of the town with the, you know, I signed up for the tour of the town for the sparkling, you know, all the Christmas lights. And, and I think everybody should actually take that tour. Spent two and a half hours driving around, and it was just absolutely beautiful. I think our residents have gone over and above this year because they just, they just want to make it really pretty and have something nice to look at. And instead of, you know, always talking COVID, at least now they can, you know, talk about some beautiful lights that people have put up in their, in and around their homes. So anyways, other than that, I didn't do, hope to others. It's a short month for us, so. Very good. Merry Christmas to everybody, and hopefully everybody stays safe, warm, healthy, and we can get through 2021 with a better year than 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Overwater. Who would like to go next? Counselor Blatz? And Harper then?
Thank you, Worship. I too attended very many special meetings as well as regular P and P meeting, which was a very long time, which I chaired. And I have to admit, I'm extremely glad that meeting is over and done with. I also attended the E O P course, Council's Roles and in Service Delivery, and also I attended an F C S S meeting. We picked a new chairperson, Angie Durand, and our vice chair will be Jamie Regwell. I also attended a wastewater commission on Friday, which we set our budget for 2021, and we set our rates at $2.40 as well. And on, and at that committee, I was appointed to the Audit Committee as well as the Health and Safety Committee. And that's, as we've had a short month between our last meeting and this one, that's all that I have to report to date. I too want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, and hopefully 2021 is going to bring us a much better year than what 2020 has turned out to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Blatz. Counselor Harper?
Thank you very much, Your Worship. I did provide a written report for the public and for our council, just a couple of highlights. We have approved our budget of $6,150,000. That includes a rate increase effective April 1st, five cents a cubic meter, and also a transfer of reserves to our reserves that are quite depleted after $34 million second water line for $200,000 to our reserves. So the rate increase is part of their business plan that's ongoing, is part of that 20 of the water line that is now complete. But we will be looking at upgrades to the water treatment plant in the near future. And I had the pleasure of delivering a number of plaques to member businesses for the chamber who are celebrating 25 years of membership with the Olds District Chamber of Commerce. So I delivered a number of those plaques on Friday with more coming out. So check their Facebook page.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ryan.
Well, thank you, Worship. I too had attended the special meetings, including the joint meeting of sorry, Mountain View County with the approval of the I D P. Finished the, completed the course, the O E P course on service delivery. Also had an S D A B hearing in Pinoka. The original one was to just, on whether or not we would actually be able to hear it. And then, so we said yes, and so we have another hearing scheduled for, the actual hearing scheduled for tomorrow. But also, oh, Parkland Regional Library Executive Board Meeting, and the Olds Municipal Library Board Meeting, you've already heard about, as well as the P and P marathon that we had. Mountain View City's Housing Board Meeting, we had an organizational meeting where I was elected to the chair, to be the board chair for the next year, and looking forward to that position. I can report that we do have one COVID case in Mountain View City's housing. It's the first one we've had since the outbreak. We were concerned about the increase. It's the first one we've had since the outbreak. We were concerned about the increasing numbers within the community of Olds and some of our other communities. So we have been really diligent in making sure that we're following all of the orders that are sent down to us. We since the start of the outbreak, we have followed the advice of the Center for Disease Control and infection, infection control and prevention, as well as we know to, for support from the Alberta Health Services. Our Director of Care and our lodge site administrators are working hard to ensure that we can do everything to reduce any risk of the spread of this, of this infection, I guess. And, you know, we have, we do have a pandemic response team that has been talking with our own Brian Powell as well. They're, they're his team. And so we are, we're on top of it. The person who tested positive is in isolation and yeah, we're, we're acting in accordance to everything that we've been told to from the Alberta Health Services, so. You know, it's unfortunate that we had one, but it also shows a tremendous amount of work from our staff and the resilience of our, of our residents to that this is only one case and it actually happened in you know, what are you gonna do, right?
Both 10 months after everything started.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the Mount View Seniors Housing has done phenomenal work throughout the region on keeping COVID up there. Thank you.
Yes, I agree, and I, and again, all like I said, tremendous work from our, from our staff and and also it takes, you know, the residents to, to buy into it as well and their families. It's a very, very difficult thing when you have a senior member of your family who is in one of the lodges and it's, and trying to, you know, we do see about the time you get to see them. I know I have that with my own mother and yeah, it's very stressful for everybody, but everybody seems to be working really hard to to get through this all, and we'll, we'll get through it, we'll get through it together, so. That's amazing. Thank you.
Very much, Counselor Ryan. We'll go to Counselor Bennett, then Thompson.
Thank you very much, your worship. I too attended many of the same meetings and also completed the service level program. Had an old institute director's meeting and went to Mountain View Seniors Housing organizational meeting and watched as Counselor Ryan got elected to prez chair. Congratulations. And all of the regular budget meetings and extra budget meetings, and I too want to say Merry Christmas and let's hope for the happiest 2021.
Very much so. Thank you very much, Counselor Bennett. Counselor Thompson?
Thank you, your worship. I too participated in the elected officials' education program on council's role in service delivery, attended the joint meeting on the IDP, the regular and co-council sessions, and also had the opportunity to, to attend Midnight Madness in Uptown Olds. And it was great to see so many people out socially distanced, wearing masks, and doing what they could to support local business. Later this week, I look forward to the municipal planning commission training session and participation in the tentative ICC joint meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. My report is fairly simple in a, in amongst many of the other things that have already been mentioned. I did virtually attend two meetings through the AUMA, both the infrastructure and energy, the first meeting with regards to that mandate for this year and second, one of our final meetings actually for the Economic Recovery Task Force. AUMA has been tasked with writing the final report for the Economic Recovery Task Force, and I'll share with council the, the completed work plan that we've done there. We also approved our work plan for the Energy and Infrastructure Committee as well, so I'll share that with, with council as well. So those two committees are going very, very well and positive things coming out of them, so. I believe we have, I will, I'll thank everybody, all the staff and, and the leadership team, wish you all a very merry Christmas and, and members of the public and yes, thank you, Counselor Thompson, for mentioning it. Please, please, please shop local this year through your Christmas shopping. If you think you can't get out or shouldn't get out to some of the retail outlets that we have in town, please pick up the telephone. I'm sure they'll find a creative way to get the products into your hands and let's, let's buy local and forget about Amazon and all those other places because local businesses need your support more than ever this year. So with that said, we have a motion on the table and I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. Alrighty, that brings us to the end of council's reports. Let's move along to correspondence and information. 9A, CAO?
Thank you, worship. There was five pieces of correspondence for this session. The first was from the Minister of Municipal Affairs, Tracy Lard, and she basically was responding to a question you posed at the AUMA convention in regards to the status of the Fire Commission Office. Her response is that they have re-aligned their services and a reorganization and that Mr. James Orr is, has been appointed the Fire Commissioner as well as continuing to be responsible for the community and technical support branch. The second correspondence was a reply from the Health Minister, Minister Iver Shandro in regards to our inquiry and to the changes in the dispatch that's going to be occurring where they're consolidating into three areas. His rationale was that it was going to be a cost savings and not a reduction in service. The third item is a redacted apology letter for one of the individuals that basically caused harm to our splash park and is a very apologetic and like for the people to know that that was a action that he fully regretted. The next item is an item in regards to the awards chair, Len Starchuck. Thank you, but also clarifying in regards to the sharing of the treats, but that was not something that would be happening because of COVID. And the last was a Christmas card from Red Deer 911 Communications for the Town of Olds. Those are the five pieces of correspondence that we received since the last meeting.
Well, thank you so much, CAO. May I have a motion to accept for information? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, your worship. I would move that the correspondence and information report ending December 14th, 2020 be received for information.
Excellent. Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. All right, so that brings us to our closed items. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Legislative Clerk, we need three separate motions with who should attend and who should not. So the first item, CAO, is generally with regards to you're on mute, sir.
I'm not quite sure. I think, I think this one's regards to our ICC discussions with the county.
Okay, so for that one, we would need yourself, council, and?
I wouldn't mind if the entire executive team stayed for that.
Exact team? Okay, good. Right, so may I have a motion to that? And please, Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. Yes, I move that we go into a closed session for FOIP Section 25 Disclosure Disclosure Harmful to Economic and Other Interests of a Public Body.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Counselor, no?
Just gonna vote.
I'll call for the vote. All in favor? And opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right, second item is with regards to?
I believe it's to deal with the Water Commission.
Yes.
I could, I could be wrong, but, and therefore, it's just myself that I think we need to stay.
Yes, that, that would be correct, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and we have a motion, please. Counselor Blatts?
Thank you, worship. I move that we go into a closed session for FOIP Item 16 and FOIP Item Section 21.
Excellent. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? All right, and that motion carries. The third item is an ONET update. That's the one I put on there. Counselor Thompson? Sir?
You're on mute.
Sorry about that. I'll declare a pecuniary interest on item number three. I will still be employed with the old institute for the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, and Legislative Clerk, I'll, I'll record what time Counselor Thompson actually leaves that as he needs to be part of the first two items, so. May I have a motion to such effect? Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. I move that we go into a closed session for FOIP Section 16, Disclosure Harmful to Business Interests of a Third Party.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Oh, Mr. Mayor, sorry?
Yes, I would like for Directors Linderman and Wagstaff to be present for that one.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right, all in favor? And opposed? And that motion carries as well. All right, so for the members of the public, we'll be going into a closed session. So when we go into the closed session, the meeting attendees have two options to continue the virtual meeting. Number one, you may click on leave the meeting button and leave the meeting and then watch our Town of Olds website and Facebook pages for live updates and council will return. Administration will post when the meeting will reconvene, and the meeting attendees will be able to re-join the virtual meeting at that time. Or you may stay online in the virtual meeting platform, and administration will move you and, to the meeting attendees into the meeting waiting room while the council is in their closed session. Once council returns, all meeting attendees will be moved from the waiting room and brought back into the meeting platform. So if you could do either one of those two options, so. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Fox to put everybody into the meeting waiting room except for all of council and the executive. All right, there's 4:25, so I'll call the regular meeting for Monday, December 14th, 2020 back to order, back to regular session. I believe we have a rising report. May I have a motion, please? Counselor Blatts?
Thank you, worship. I move that we instruct the mayor to act as directed during our session. Does that sound good?
Yep, that's perfect. All right, any questions, comments, concerns? I guess, Counselor Harper?
Is Mr. Thompson not coming back? Not till we do the rest?
Back until we voted, then we'll bring him back in and tell him what the
Oh, okay.
Yep. Alrighty, questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? Motion is carried. All right, Mr. Fox, if you could bring Counselor Thompson back? Okay, there's Counselor Thompson back in. We did have a rising report, Counselor Thompson. Council asked me to act as in accordance with the discussion during the closed session, so. And that was passed six to zero. All right, I am just looking at my agenda and I don't see anything other than adjournment. Who would like adjourn? Counselor Bennett? All right, won the hands-up contest, so unless anybody has any objections, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Oh, Counselor Overwater?
Stop that.